They're playing awesome. They got soft room, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
It doesn't tell me if we are, but yeah.
The Dallas doesn't usually be late, doesn't know if he can make it, but he'll try.
Okay, so I want to call the public, public utilities meeting. Um, Mr. Purcelli.
Here.
Mr. Biz.
Here.
And Mr. Delman here. Um, the reason we're calling this tonight is to kind of touch base with Tom about our gas rates and what our next step is for next year. Yeah, you can have a seat right there.
Here, you might want to sit here because the Dallas is doing.
He doesn't know yet. He's working.
He's coming, he's gonna be late, he just gonna be.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, so I have a handout with the, with the, uh, schedule on it. So, tonight I wanted to talk about the natural gas program and, uh, and the renewal. So, what we have now is a four-year, we had a four-year, four-year agreement with that. So, um, it was three eighty-four per MCF or three seventy-four with, with the senior discount. So, we would, we would like the, uh, authorization to move forward with getting a request for proposal, getting bids from suppliers. Constellation has announced that they won't be, uh, renewing the contract. So, we'll, we'll need to get somebody new. So that, so I've been working on that and I've got, I have some interest from some very good suppliers to, uh, to bid on it. So, we'd be asking the committee to approve our agreement here, which is the, the same, really the same, exactly the same thing as we did four years ago. And, um, we would, uh, get bids from the suppliers and present those to city council. And, uh, these are, so these would be the steps. So sometime early November, do between now and, and early November, a supplier agreement. And then we need to send the letters out to all the residents, give a twenty-one day opt-out period. And, um, you know, hopefully mail those letters around December fifteenth or so. And then it would be a February flow date, February start for March bill. March would be the first bill with the new rate. So that's what we do.
I can't remember, um, can they join at any time and not, okay, because it's the opt-out.
Yes, uh, Constellation was very good about that. So, but the new supplier will be negotiating some new terms and conditions, but it's pretty much industry standard to let people come in and out at any time. I've had a couple of suppliers, you know, when the market's gone up, because, uh, with this fixed rate, you know, the price has been stable. In, in twenty twenty-two, prices were like nine dollars. So, we've had suppliers, uh, you know, stop additional enrollments and things like that. But, uh, so it's part of the negotiating process, but I sure hope that we would have ongoing basis that customers come in. I, I think, um, there'll be no early termination fee. I don't know any suppliers who do termination fees anymore. That was kind of hit or miss, but, uh, it's, everyone's kind of standardized on, um, no, no early termination.
Are we looking for another four-year deal or are they offering that?
So, that's part of the RFP process. Um, I wouldn't imagine we'd get something that long. Um, I'm seeing one, lately I've been seeing one in two years.
Okay.
Um, just twenty twenty-two scared everybody, it was so volatile and, uh, prices went up.
It's kind of been the trend with the electric as well, right?
Yeah, so, so electric prices went up, twenty twenty-two as well, but again.
Yeah, we went from.
With the fixed price, we were pretty much unaffected, but there was quite.
Well, we went up from four forty-four to seven fifteen, seven, seven ninety-five.
Yeah, yeah, so Ohio Edison is at nine and a half. So, that sounds really high, but it's a lot better than doing nothing.
Because we're gonna have to go into negotiations for that pretty soon as well.
Yeah, 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 I'd say. So, in October, um, First Energy will be doing an auction, and so I'll have a better price than what they're charging. Just because if we lock in a price now, I would have no idea if it's save, it's gonna save money or not. So, if we wait for that auction in October and, and then maybe start looking at that, um, we can do, we can do that. But, you know, that's why I recommended that price, because I knew it was gonna save money.
Yeah.
Have you seen what the gas, uh, rates are? I mean, have you been following to see what they are, I mean, or three?
Yeah.
Three eighty-four, what, how, how much of an increase you did?
Uh, right now, it's like five-ten and five-twenty. So, I haven't, you know, I've been holding off on striking something that high. I'd really love to see something, you know, four fifty or four seventy.
Well, in the past, your timing's been pretty well.
So, yeah.
Yeah, the timing is very important. You've done a great job as far as timing.
And we've been able to push that term out farther in the past too, which has helped us tremendously.
Yeah.
So, if that's possible, I mean, that's something I, I would say.
Yeah, I'm just, I have full confidence that you'll get the best deal for us, that's for sure.
Yes.
So, that's what, uh, that's what we'll be doing, we'll be working on that. And, uh, see how, how the market goes, but, uh, yeah, we're really not missing out on anything. And it was higher this spring, it was even worse. So, it has come down. So, I think, uh, October, November is usually a good time, is a good time to strike energy prices. We're, we're still in summer, so once we get to the fall, uh, I think we should see some, some better pricing. I just want to be able to set up so that we have all the approvals done, so that we can go ahead and set that.
So then, right after that, obviously, we're gonna have to go into electric then.
Right, right.
Because it's four weeks after.
Yeah, yeah.
Four months, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, electric's something you could do today.
Four months, I'm sorry.
That's, uh, that's about nine cents. Yeah, we just said some, we, we did a community today, we did one yesterday, um, that was about what we were giving, nine, eight, eight point nine. So, will that save or not? I don't know. So, I, I, I would prefer to wait, see what Ohio Edison, Ohio Edison's gonna do.
You don't think that will, it will raise in that wait time? You're willing to gamble it?
Yeah, yeah.
Risk versus reward type of thing?
Yeah, I think it's worth the risk to wait, uh, till fall. And, uh, get, get something better or even wait even further. But, uh, I would like to see that auction number, mid-October, I think. We'll see that, that number, and then I can estimate what Ohio Edison's rate is gonna be. And then, if we get something better, then we can lock it in.
Pretty good.
Yeah. Okay, true. Yeah, yeah. So, since we're talking about electric, we have, um, um, from Dyna-G, they have a, they have a greenbacks program. So, that, that was forty-five hundred dollars, uh, as part of that, that, that grant money. So, um, you know, the city can, can spend it on, you know, a lot of different things, um, HVAC, LED lighting, uh, some sort of equipment upgrades. New construction even, so that's pretty, pretty general. But, yeah, if you have a project, energy-related project, forty-five hundred dollars has been set aside in a grant to, to pay.
Right now, we're thinking about using it for the building at Nevo, uh, for HVAC. So, all we have to do is fill this out, attach the receipt, and we get that back. So, there's a couple of different things, but right now.
So, that's ours, no matter what, we just gotta figure out what we want to use it for?
Right, right. That was part of the, this spring, this contract. I think that's it. The, the natural gas certification is coming, coming due in January, so thirty to ninety days, that needs renewed. So, we're working on that too, so the city will have its certificate with D C R as well, so we're, working on that.
So, you're good.
Anyone else have any questions? We'll need to have, um, the finance and legislation bring out that piece of legislation for you, right? For you'd be able to shop the.
Right, right.
I just wanted to make sure we won't.
That's the same one we always do, correct?
Okay, no other questions? Or the motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
You adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Very much, thanks for coming.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Good man.
I'd like to call this finance and legislation meeting in order, Mr. Burnside here, Mr. Ballack here, Mr. Bigley is here. We have a few pieces of legislation. I'm gonna go through the first one, and then. Well, I'm gonna go through this one, then we'll go into discussion, and then we'll, we'll worry about the other. And the first one is, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city of Strether's to enter into an agreement with Buckeye Energy Brokers, Inc. For aggregation consulting services and any other required services related to natural gas utility, degradation, uh, ratifying any such service. Herefore performing and declaring an emergency, in a motion to bring it out.
Motion to bring it out.
Second?
Second.
Now, we have Officer Haas here tonight to speak on a piece of pending, like Captain Haas, sorry. On a piece of current pending legislation.
Uh, yes, I would first like to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to come up here and discuss this ordinance with you guys. Uh, back prior to break, I spoke with the mayor, as well as John, um, the sort of trying to don't the ordinance, uh, which is similar to the one that, uh, the city of Camel has. During our traffic detail that we worked downtown with the gas, we ended up having, uh, three separate crashes within the works. One of them, well, the box truck, which ended up striking a building, and thankfully, um, no one was seriously injured during that time. We also had an incident where we had a, a worker bolted and put a voltage case on a construction worker. With this ordinance, I, I, I believe with us being on scene, we'll be able to assist with detour routes. Uh, we'll be on scene if, if the company wishes to have flaggers, that's, they're more than welcome to. But it's more of a, to slow traffic down, be visible, we're able to address the issues within the zones. Another perk is, we're on scene. I know right now with us running fire, or with fire-running EMS calls, throughout on the roads a lot more. It gives us an opportunity that we know where, where these persons are gonna be going, especially we can get the traffic out of that area, to get them through where they need to go, so they're not trapped up in the, uh, traffic zone.
Officer, or Captain Haas, when you guys are on site, you can flag as well and do traffic detail, wasn't that correct?
Uh, rephrase the question, I don't understand. Or we, or, yeah, we can direct traffic.
You can direct traffic, is that correct?
Yes, correct. No, obviously, depending on the size of the zone, um.
Some things are beyond your.
Beyond, or it, it would probably be better off.
Called an AWP.
Having, having another organization coming in. I have no issues whatsoever, Russ with AWP did a phenomenal job downtown.
Yeah.
He worked with us, um, we were able to help him with the detours. Um, the unfortunate thing with these, with these, um, companies is that they're huge. So, you may have a crew here working this week, well, that crew might not be here the following week, so now you got a new group of, of people. And, just like with everything else, you know, some people do better jobs than others. I think this will help, um, with, with the issues within these zones. I know we do have some projects coming up, I mean, I, it, it's all about the safety of, of, of the workers as well as the drivers in the city going through these zones.
Absolutely.
The unfortunate thing is, I mean, we're right on site, we still have people, uh, that don't buy, they try driving around the road, close signs, I still can't make sense of it, but. Um, we, we can't deter everything, I mean, incidents are gonna happen, but I think with us being on scene, I think it'd be a great asset.
Definitely, um, are you volunteering for these or are you assigned these or?
That's something that we would have to get worked out, I guess, with the city. From my understanding, with this ordinance, it would be an off-duty, it would be compensated as a, as an off-duty rate through, uh, the rate which the F O P is charged.
So, we'll maintain the personnel needed to run the daily operations as well?
Daily operations won't be affected, this will be all off-duty personnel.
Okay.
Um, that would be compensated as, as an off-duty job.
Okay.
Which would be, uh, more or less paid from the company, um, directly to, to the officer.
Do you see any issues with staffing in this, under short notice or anything like that?
I don't believe so, um, I know.
Just because I know we're limited on manpower, and that's always an issue.
One thing I will say is with the, with the detail downtown, um, I don't think there was one time that we, we had a, a vacancy where we weren't able to get somebody there. And just like every, everything else, I mean, if we needed to get additional personnel, we always do have mutual agreements that we could reach out to Camel, um, Louisville. Looks like we'd probably be Camel first, but there's a pecking order, and we would go down to see additional resources, whether it be the sheriff's department.
Okay.
Is this all jo, like, all street jobs, like, what, what?
No, it can read the ordinance.
Okay.
Most of the streets that are listed on there are, are, are main, borough, Ferris Road, Main Drags, Youngstown, Palm Road, East Midlothian, Fish Street, State Street.
They're all identified in there?
Yes, they are all listed in the ordinance, um.
There was one we, I think, was it Sexton?
Uh, yeah, there was one street, Sexton, I did put on there due to the bends and, and the blind spots in those locations. Um, another one, I don't know if we were able to get added to the, uh, uh, Wetmore was another one. Uh, and I can't remember who we, we get.
Yeah, Wetmore is on here.
To be working to Broad Street.
Yeah, we added them.
Yeah, Wetmore.
Yeah, yeah.
Youngstown, Palm Road, Strether's, Poland Road, Golden Avenue, Sanford Street, Northford Street, Louisville Road, State Street, Fifth Street, Center Street, Klingon, Sexton, Midlothian, Broad Street, and Wetmore.
John, are we able to enforce this on state and county roads, being that we don't have jurisdiction on how they're repaired? We still have jurisdiction under our ordinance?
We still have jurisdiction to enforce the traffic laws on those roads, so I don't see why we wouldn't be allowed.
You know, we just got, had a situation where with, um, Bridge Street.
Yeah.
Didn't have to be repaired to our standards because it wasn't our road, it was a county road, that's the only reason, I thought.
Where?
Downtown.
No, they're doing that.
Oh, they are?
They are doing it, they just haven't.
John, I thought, I thought when we discussed it.
You gotta go under the tracks, yeah.
I thought when we discussed it, we didn't have the authority to force them through a county road to fix it to our city standards.
I, I, I mean, if they're doing it voluntarily.
Well, no, I'm saying that's great, I, I'm happy that they are, but when we had asked you prior, you didn't think that we were gonna be able to uphold our standards through our ordinance on those roads? Because they weren't city roads, they were county roads.
Correct, I, I, I still agree with that statement.
Okay.
I also agree with what Matt said in that.
So, we won't have a problem, that's all?
Yeah, we still have an op, we still have a responsibility to monitor traffic and preserve, preserve traffic.
Yeah, that's, that's all.
Didn't Safety Service Director push the issue for going mid, 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 mid-line?
Yep, yep.
And they agreed?
Yes, we met, um, not shortly after there with, um, Travis Stalker, the whole team at Enbridge, their whole, everybody down there. So, yeah, so I think they got most of the sidewalks already, but they have not done the center line yet, but they are doing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody have anything else for Captain Haas?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, on this, does everybody want to read this? Go over it if you want to make any changes, do it before committee, and bring it out, it's gonna get brought out at the same time anyway.
I think he was pretty much stuck in the plan to whatever he did.
Only going for three readings.
It's gonna go for three readings.
Yeah, I, I think we're, okay.
All right, an ordinance creating three oh five point one three of the qualified ordinance of the city of Strether's to require a uniformed officer to direct traffic when any construction or work, uh, necessities, the blocking or closing of certain streets within the city. Need a motion to bring it out.
Motion to bring it out.
Second?
Second then.
Abstain?
I'm gonna abstain, so I don't know, because I'm gonna use them for work, so I shouldn't get a vote on it. Correct, John, would you deem that?
I would say you should not.
Okay.
You, on that end, may want to vote no, for various reasons, even. And the councilmen may want to vote yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, just in general, I, legally, you would advise me not to.
I would advise you not to, yes.
Okay, what else we got for finance and legislations?
I have one thing I wanted to, um, talk briefly about, and this is just a discussion because I didn't get the ordinance yet.
Thanks, Mike.
But Poland, um, last night, uh, passed first reading on an ordinance regarding, I didn't get the spec specifics, so I'll bring it to the next committee meeting. But they just passed something for anyone under the age of eighteen on an electric bike scooter, that they have to have a helmet and it has to be strapped correctly. So, I'm gonna get the language and bring it, if that's something we want to look into, because Rick had come in and we talked about, um, everything, all parts that were gonna roll out. But, this is a, this is for, that is more geared towards the electric.
Scooters.
Scooters or whatnot, so I want to see how they.
Worded it.
Yeah, worded it, yeah.
Got it. Very good.
What else we got?
Well, I think everybody got the copy of the, uh, the ordinance, and it's very vague on, um. On the driveway. I got it. I think it's A underneath that is the only thing that's mentioned. Um, that it's graded and, and as a hard surface, so it has to be either the, the material, the asphalt, all that. Um, and I know, Mike, you had said before, somebody had dirt and was not wet.
Yeah, Sexton Street, that's what enticed us to put something together.
Well, if you looked at that parking lot, did you get a chance to look on Sixth Street? I, I mean, I.
I know, I know.
When it gets, when it gets wet.
Does it?
Is it gonna be dirt?
I don't, I don't go by when it's raining.
Well, it hasn't rained.
Well, it's rained since they've had it in.
Not much, but.
Yeah, I, I suppose that would be my concern too, is that, you know, we get a heavy rain there and, uh, you know, part of it has some, I mean, it, it's hard to even tell where the gravel is at. You know, that, uh, you know, a good rain and a little bit of time, that's gonna get compressed, and I mean, I don't know what it's gonna end up looking like. Yeah, but at that point, you can make them add gra, more gravel to that.
That's what we did originally with that ordinance is, when it rained heavy and necessitated a mud trail from that property out on a road.
You made them add more gravel?
Right, at that time, that's, you know, so, same thing up there. If what they've done so far creates a unsightly condition because of muds getting dragged from that.
Through the street.
Property or the street, then we can.
Yeah.
Address the property owner and.
Right. But it, but it, it even looks like on that lot that part of it, the part that does look like there may be some gravel there.
It's sparse.
There's also a, a part of it that looks like there is no gravel that is being driven on, you know, that. If that's the case, then you shouldn't, we should enforce them or it to add more gravel to some type of standard.
I suggested that to the seat, the, the, um, couldn't enforce was last night to maybe get someone at fifty-eight and put it down.
Fifty-seven, but yeah, if that is the, if that is the issue.
I, I, I think so too, I, I did ride past it, I think there should be a little bit more put down. I mean, it's not a lot of money to put that stuff down, you know what I mean?
Well, and at the approachment, so, I, of course, I don't have my phone tonight, so I looked up driveway. If you Google driveway or look up driveway, it specifically will give you a definition of a driveway. A driveway goes from the, that approachment there to either a house or garage.
Well, a driveway doesn't necessarily, in, in ours, it doesn't have to have a structure. There doesn't have to be a structure there for it to be a, a paved surface.
Well, there is an, there is an approachment there made for a driveway.
Okay.
That's not dug out, that doesn't have gravel.
I'm sorry, it also doesn't say like how big, I mean.
Right.
I looked at that and I think it's a parking lot.
It, it does not appear to be a driveway.
It doesn't look like a driveway to me, a driveway would be two-car, three-car even, four-car even, but like, that's parking lot to me, that's my opinion.
And I took a couple of pictures in my, on my street of the driveways, and there are a couple of people that have, um, they've added on gravel to their driveway. It's very nice, it's tastefully done, it's a nice gravel, deep enough to notice that it's gravel and not dirt, not mud. And it's both on my block.
And plus, that's a residential area down there.
It is a residential area.
Oh, there's, nobody's denying that.
Nobody's saying it's not, but Mike don't know why that's a question.
So. And I know this is a touchy subject, so you look at that and you're saying that's a parking lot, right? Parking lot that I know of, that's yellow or white lines designated parking spaces for vehicles to park, that does not have that.
Okay, so.
I'm not done, can I please finish what I'm gonna say? So, that parking area does not have yellow or white lines that designate a parking spot. It does not also have arrows designating the entrance or exit coming from that air, from that area. That does not have that there. There is no signage pertaining to, uh, 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 whatnot. Them are the things that I see as a parking lot. That area up there does not have none of that.
But have you ever seen a gravel lot with lines and things like that?
But, but I'm just saying, when you go to a parking lot.
They're like, they're like from the stadium.
Yeah.
Across from the stadium, across from New Lease on Life, or all that working over there.
I mean, you can go wherever, you can go wherever you want with it, but I'm just saying.
Well, no, I understand where, kind of where everybody's coming from, but for me, I've been more, I want to force them to do what we're able to force them to do, which is follow our ordinance, right? Our ord, and, and that, that is all we can ask or not ask of someone, that, that's it. They could come in here and tell you they're gonna pave it in gold, they don't have to do it. This is what they have to do.
That's where I get, um, where I, I feel, and, and I've said this to all of you already, I've listened to that meeting over and over.
Sure.
And, and listened to what we were told.
Sure.
Um, and what we were told was he was gonna put a house on that lot. Twice, we were told he was gonna put a house on that lot. No house is gonna go on that lot.
But whether he does or not, he doesn't have to.
Well, I'm just saying, so, so, and we heard him about his integrity two, three times.
His integrity doesn't mean anything to the ordinance.
He's doing what he said he was gonna do, that is.
You know what I mean? But.
He hasn't, because if you've actually gone past there, that is not a nice graded area.
According to you, it's not, according to our ordinance and legally, he is.
Well, there is not much on that, so our ordinance needs to change.
And did you want him to put a house on it in three months? He just bought the property.
I'm not even saying, I'm just telling you, that's his, what he said a couple of times.
No, I understa, Lord, I understand where you're coming from.
I'm just repeating what he said, I don't care.
But you're also saying he's not putting a house there. He hasn't yet, at least.
Well, he hasn't yet, and he, okay.
He just bought the property.
Well, he said he was gonna do a nice driveway, he said he was gonna dig it out and he was gonna put down gravel. There's hardly any gravel there, I don't know what you're looking at, because there's hardly any gravel in that lot.
So, require him to put, require him to put gravel down to be in compliant with the ordinance?
It needs to be a hard surface, it is not a hard surface.
Right, you know what I mean? You know, I, I don't, do I necessarily think we have to change this ordinance?
It could be gravel, it could be building.
Or do we have to ask him to comply with it by putting enough gravel down that it isn't mud and you've met compliance?
Right, because whatever we change it to, he's gonna comply, because that's what he's done so far.
That's fine.
Yep.
I'm good with that. Right? I, I, and I, Lori, I get where you're coming from as far as the parking lot portion, but, so if he digs a, a turnaround driveway that goes way out and way back in, is it really any different? Is it gonna be any, is it, is, is it gonna be any more or any less unsightly? It's gonna be the same thing, I mean, I, I don't, the ordinance is, is clear on what it has to be, and it does have to be a hard surface. If you don't think, if you think it's more mud than hard surface, make them put more down. Uh, I mean, would you agree with that? Yeah, Billy, how, how much gravel, you know, is there on the, you know, it, to me, it looks like the back of the lot is just grass and no, and no, and no gravel.
Yeah, there's, there's no specifications on how much gravel you have to put in.
But, in terms of using the other part of the lot as a place to drive, which is obviously, it's obvious that they're doing that, I mean, you can see the tire tracks all over the place. You know, so, should they be required to have gravel on that portion as well, being that they are using it as a?
Truthfully, truthfully, Jimmy, that wouldn't be a problem with you.
Okay.
He'll do whatever we ask him to do, whatever he says, but like I drive.
Okay, okay, I guess my other.
He's saying counsel and, and ask, what do I have to do?
Okay, okay.
But there's times where, I live next door to my sister, sometimes if I can't get my car out, I pull through the grass to get onto the street.
Oh, I would do the same thing, but this, but, but that's a, that's a once in a while kind of thing. This is, I mean, you drive there and you can see the people that go there, they go to the back and then they come around and then they, and they, they park their cars facing the street. They're using the yard as part of the driveway, so to speak, turnaround.
But whatever we change the ordinance to, because he's been abiding by the ordinances since we have him, he's just gonna fix it however we.
Right. So, my thing is. And, and that's, I think that's, I think that's all, all, all we're asking for, right?
I think in a certain.
Well, because it looks terrible, I, I mean, I.
That's, that's my thing too, is like.
I don't understand why you're defending, and I get it, he's a really nice guy, I have nothing against him.
That, still for me, that has zero to do with it, whether you're a horrible person or a good person, absolutely. That, still for me, that has zero to do with it, whether you're a horrible person or a good person, absolutely. This is your standard and you follow that, it, it doesn't matter to me.
We're going after someone that said he was gonna put a driveway in, it's not a driveway, it takes up almost how.
The rules are the same for everybody, whether he brings a million dollars here or zero, but.
I like to say how much a lot can have a driveway on.
Right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass these around, cause I, I showed these to a few councilmen, council people, and I was told to print this for council. This is, so you're hearing complaints from a petition and from certain people who have complained since before I've been in office, and I want you to take a look at the backyard.
While they're taking a look at that, can I make a point?
And you could see, we sent a letter out because we have a disabled vehicle, two disabled vehicles on grass, a dual axle trailer, tires everywhere, there's junk all over the backyard. So why are we, why are we targeting this guy, I, I feel like we're, we're targeting him.
Because, because you know what, anybody now can come in the city and buy a vacant lot that's residential, and let's just put our business on it.
There's rocks on it.
I mean, you're just, you're giving them the okay.
They're putting cars. They're putting cars.
Business vehicles.
But it, yeah, it is a function of the.
But we're giving them the okay.
Business vehicles on every, almost every house in the, in the city.
I just, I gotta make a point, I gotta make a point, for how much you're gonna alter this, I would be very careful, because there's a ton of gravel park, of gravel driveways. In the city that are far worse, are we gonna run out and enforce every single gravel driveway that has a little bit of dirt?
Listen, I don't.
Every mill house over there has a gravel driveway that there's hardly any gravel in it, that's, that's the first one. The second one is, if you're gonna start attacking commercial vehicles being parked in residential areas, right? And you're gonna say that, well, it's registered to a commercial business, I'd be very careful, because this is a hardworking town, you have every Rudzik employee that gets a take home car. You have police that get a take home car, you have Bovas that get take home cars, and they're parked all over, so I wouldn't attack this saying that trucks that are, that are.
Oh, are you done with that?
Have, you know, signage on them are now, we're deeming them commercial vehicles in our ordinance, I'm not gonna do that.
Yeah.
So that, that is taken out of it for me, and if we're gonna allow those people to take car, cars home to a residential property, then we really can't prohibit this on residential property.
I, 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 I thought we designated what the commercial vehicle.
We did, but it keeps going back, they're now saying that.
If there's a sign on it, then.
It doesn't matter, it doesn't make any difference, what we have deemed as a commercial vehicle, is a one ton dual rear wheeled vehicle with a non-factory bed, that's what we have deemed.
Is it double?
If you take it away from that, you are going to start attacking hardworking employees that belong to people, belong to companies in this city that get a take home car.
I agree.
And where does it stop, you're, do you wanna cruiser park there with that, that's your job, now that, what's that become? Your job is to be a cop, you get a take home vehicle, should you not be able to get a take home vehicle now?
Why do you have a conversation now then?
I don't think they're, I don't think that, that's the discussion about, about, uh, commercial vehicles, I think, I think the discussion.
No, I don't.
But we keep going back to that they're parking commercial vehicles in a residential area.
No, I, I, I've heard that, I've heard that twice tonight.
I've heard that, I've heard that twice tonight.
Well, I didn't say commercial, I, I didn't say commercial vehicles, I just said, first of all, even the approachment to the driveway is not gravelled. So how are they getting into that, into the driveway, now?
Billy, make them gravel it, and if that's the case.
Well, how are they getting into the driveway?
What, what do you, what do you want the gentleman to do?
Well, first of all, let's make it, can we make it look nice?
Truthfully, he will not be, he, I talked to him today, he will not be here this week, he will not be here next week, he's gonna take a vacation in Bahamas. Whatever you want him to do, I'll call him and he'll do it. His original thing was when he thought it could be rezoned, commercial, he was gonna fit it, put a nice building up there, fenced around with a gate for his vehicles. But then all the.
Well, we can't, we can't just zone it commercial, am I correct on that?
That was his initial, that's what he was told, that's not what we're doing.
That was, that was his initial thing, because there's a, a commercial lot right next to him.
Well, we could, but we've agreed that we weren't going, but we, we could.
Yeah. You can, you can, you can do, you can do spot commercial property in residential areas.
It's abutting another commercial property, of course you can, it wouldn't even be out of the realm, but we've all agreed, we weren't gonna do that.
Yeah. I mean, sure, there's many.
We designated that.
But if it stayed empty for more than a year, it resorted back to residential.
Sure, but we, again, we've all agreed not to let it go to commercial.
Correct.
Because of residents across the street, residents next door, we don't wanna invade any further, correct?
Right.
I, I mean, and, and we're all in agreeance on that, how, but to, to your point, yes, we could, we, between us and the zoning board, that's the governing body on it, I mean.
But are you sparing him?
Absolutely.
Well, I just feel that when we discussed what he was going to do, to me, he was not compliant, or what he said is not what he did. That's how I feel, I may be way off base, I just feel that he, he sat here and said he was gonna dig it out, gonna put a barrier, there's no barrier. Yeah, if you go back and listen to, go ahead, back and listen to.
He said weed barrier.
He was gonna put a weed barrier, there's no barrier.
I, I don't know if there is or not.
Well, I mean, there's no weed barrier, there's no barrier, and honestly, it's just not, all, all of me do.
Well, what would make, what would make council happy, what, what do you want?
Well, I don't know about, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for anybody else, but Mike was complaining about, um, whatever lot that was with mud and getting mud trapped and doing whatever. So I just think it needs to be a designated spot with a, a decent amount of gravel, that's not gonna get mud, and we're not gonna drive on the grass. Are you smirking for some reason?
No, maybe.
Council, council wanna hold, let me know what you want me to tell him, and I'll make sure he gets it done.
Okay, does everybody agree with what Lori said, he adds more gravel, he makes sure it's presentable, that it's a designated area?
Absolutely. He will do it.
Okay, is council as a whole, do we all agree to that?
Yeah, I do.
I mean, first of all, first of all, that cannot get any bigger than what it is, there should be something.
We don't have a specification on that.
There should be something that specifies how much somebody can have a driveway in a residential area.
In a residential area. So we're gonna go tell Mr. Rudzik that he can't have that long driveway in all those areas for people to park.
How much does he own, uh, back there, like.
He owns your lot.
It's still the same.
Well, I know, but I mean, it's a big lot, this is not, this is like a postage stamp and half of it is.
It was his driveway, what's on for the other?
And you're smirks too.
I am, because I'm not understanding, you can't say it's good for this one and not okay for this one.
Well, I don't understand it either. Well, you're doing the same thing, this one needs to have gravel, this one doesn't, you can have a mud lot, what's the difference?
No, we just said it, we just said we would make them put down more gravel if that's what, how you feel, but you're saying.
No, it does.
Well, I mean, I, it's not just me, it has to be everybody, I'm just saying.
I understand, but you're saying that, you know, let's put it down so it doesn't become muddy, well, you put the cart before the horse, because we haven't had any problems with it being muddy yet.
Well, do you think it's gonna get muddy there?
I, I, I don't, I'll be honest with you, I don't know until it rains.
Right.
And I think it did rain and I haven't seen any mud, but it's on a street I'm on every day, you know what I mean?
It has, it has.
Play it simple, they said they're gonna make him put gravel, gravel down to make it right, and he's gonna do it, plan something, that's what's gonna happen.
Yes.
That, I, and that's what I'm in favor of, right? If, if you, if there isn't sufficient gravel down, then put more gravel down.
Right, correct.
Right, aside from that, I, I don't know that we're gonna change a whole ordinance and stir up a, a can of worms here, then.
Well, I suppose the, the, the thing that concerns me is if it's okay to make an entire, is, is that really what the, what the, the mindset was when this ordinance was first put in place? Is, do, are, are we okay with, are you okay with your next door neighbor turning his front yard into a gravel parking lot? I mean, is, is it, because, you know, as the ordinance is, that's what anybody can do, you know, and if, and if, if, if that's the way we're gonna leave it and think that this is a one time thing. You know, I, I, I don't know, I, I, to me, there, there is, there is an area of concern there.
I would agree, but wouldn't you say we force them to, or we ask them?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm not talking about, I, 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 you know, as far as he's concerned, to comply with, with that, yes.
If that starts to, we have one, if that starts to become an issue.
Right.
And there's thirty throughout the city, maybe we need to address that, right?
And what's gonna stop people from doing this, because we're allowing one person to do it, so.
We're allowing everybody, our ordinance allows everybody to do it.
But it's, but the ordinance has been that way for, for all this time.
That's the way it has always been.
Always been that way.
And I gotta make another, I, I gotta make that point that whether this guy brought a million dollars here or zero dollars, he should follow the ordinance the same way. And we should force him to follow the ordinance the same way.
Well, absolutely.
I mean, it, so that doesn't matter to me, what he's trying to do here or not trying to do, I was very adamant when he came here about just following the ordinance. Did he say he was gonna go above and beyond, he did, I have nothing to hold him to that, I'm not, if, if, if he said that and didn't follow through, I'm not mad about it if he followed this. This was all he was required to do, that's it, uh, uh, I'm not mad if he lied to me, you're allowed to lie to me, who am I?
Well, I, I drove, I drove by today and there was two trucks and two cars parked there, and they were all on the gravel. Yeah. Their, their, and their bumpers weren't even near the, the grass that's in front, so.
But it's the, it's the back of the lot where, where they're driving to.
But, but you, you, yeah, you can, if you drive by, it, it does look sparse.
Sure.
In the back, up front, there's gravel.
Yeah, in the, in the back is, is the part that concerns me more than anything, because, because you know.
Because they back around and.
After the last meeting, he was gonna go and put stuff down, we said wait, because we're gonna see what council, don't go do it, because we don't know if they're gonna change something, because he'll do whatever we ask him to do.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if, if that's the issue, make.
He would change this last.
If the issue is not enough gravel, ask them to put, put some more gravel, and Billy, you said he's willing to do it, so I, I suppose.
Mm-hmm.
He said he'll do it.
He'll, he'll do, he'll do whatever council asks him.
Okay. But we, we don't have anything as far as a barrier between the grass and the, the, the drive surface. Um, so we can't, we're not gonna force him to do anything like that, I, I don't.
So Lori, you, you would like to see him gravel the approach as well?
That's the drive, I mean, honestly, I would think.
There's a concrete, there's a concrete approach there.
Okay, but when you go up that approach, where's that car gonna go when there's no, it's grass, I mean, that's fine if.
I don't understand.
Okay.
I'm not understanding.
The purpose of cement, from the, from the approach is good.
So you, you're gonna have approach, then sidewalk, then gravel, correct?
But there is no gravel, it's grass.
He's gonna have to gravel that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's the approach, that's the driveway.
The, the approach is the part between the sidewalk and the street, which is concrete, that's the approach.
It's from the street.
Okay, that's the approach, so he can just go, I mean, how, how is he gonna go from the approach into that lot?
That's right. Oh, no, I, I, I haven't seen that part, but I would tell you that it should be, uh, gravel, up to the sidewalk, because the.
Gravel.
Gravel right there, yeah.
It, it, yeah.
The cars will be going over it, yeah.
Correct, yeah. If they, if they do have to go way in the back to the grass part to turn around and come up front to park up front, maybe you should have like a little.
Put more gravel there.
A gravel turnaround back there. I would agree, yeah, and then we don't have to worry about the mud situation if it was gonna be a issue.
Well, and that's, and that's what would happen, that's what would happen too, obviously, if it would, it would rain and they went to the, it would, it would start getting mud.
So how big is, how big?
How much gravel does he need?
I don't know.
I don't.
Inch, two inches?
I, I, to be honest with you, I would, if you're asking my personal opinion, I would say no less than two inches, you know?
Yeah.
What am I gonna, what am I gonna tell him? Okay.
Cause it is gonna get compacted, that's gonna buy you a little bit of time, in a few years, might need to ask them to put down more if that gets compacted so far, now that there's mud again.
And it will, and it will.
I mean, that's just, that's just how it would go.
Actually, that's what it looks like happened to the gravel that was there.
Yeah, he dug it.
Yeah, that's what it does.
I was there when he dug it down, it was down, he dug down around two inches.
Right, and it was gravel, so.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Added more gravel.
Can I ask how big that lot is, how big is that lot?
Just didn't put enough. You have to look on my own county audit.
It's sixty-two by one fifty.
And how big is that?
Seventy-two hundred square feet.
That's, that's a fair sized lot, it's, it's not a postage stamp at all.
That's a big lot.
It is, it is, seventy-two hundred square feet are minimum requirement, it's six thousand.
Well, he has, he has. To the other side, like, from that side to the other side, he's got quite a bit, like, that garage that sits back there.
Is that his, whose garage?
Whose garage is that?
That's not his.
That's the neighbors'.
Okay.
Does council have a problem with her speaking?
I don't. Anybody else?
I don't, to your meeting. Anybody else?
It's all of our meeting, Bob.
I would like to say something about the photo passed around, I've lived there thirty years, never won citation for anything. I bought that property two years ago, and before I handed you the cash, I asked, how long do I have? Because I'm buying a mess and I knew I was buying a mess, I knew exactly what I was buying. You told me as long as I showed improvement, that the city would not go after me, now, I, I, you, let me finish. First thing I said, and I promised, I said the first thing I'm gonna do is put a fence up, so the neighborhood wouldn't have to look at this no more, I did that. Second thing I did, I fixed up the, the island, I'm now working on the roof shed, I just pulled everything that was left in that shed. Out into the yard a couple of weeks ago, and we took, took the roof down. I have done nothing but improvements in that yard, neighbors I haven't even spoken to, never even knew, have stopped to tell me how nice that yard looks. I also last summer said, if anybody wants to stop and look at how it looks now, then I'll go over what my plans are for that yard. There was an open invite, nobody has ever come, I've not received any citations, I've gotten nothing, nothing in the mail. Nobody has ever came to my house and said, you know, there's a problem with something back here. But now you're gonna pass the photo around and say there's a problem, was there a deadline, because you told me there was. Well, I could show you receipts of everything I've done, I've spent every weekend for the last two summers doing stuff in that yard. So what is the problem now, nobody could see it. I've taken two eighteen foot dumpsters of trash out of there so far, and if you call DJ Oldish, I have a third one on its way. I have a roofing company coming to give me quotes for the shed, like, what, what else do I need to do, I've done nothing but what I promised. And now you're gonna pass that around and say there's a problem.
Do you want me to?
What is, yes, now.
I find it ironic that you're complaining about cars parked on grass when you have a disabled vehicle on grass, you have a.
Uh, there's no disabled vehicles, and it's not on grass, it's on the, that truck.
That looks. So you, so you could drive the.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, not the truck, I'm talking about that vehicle there, is that yours?
I can't see what you're.
This truck is on grass.
The Derby car.
Oh, it starts.
This truck is on grass.
We're using it for another Derby.
This truck right here is on grass, this trailer is on grass.
The trailer we did back in there and it was on grass inside my yard, cause we were doing stuff.
Okay. But that's what, I find it ironic that you're complaining about vehicles parked on grass when you have them in your own property.
That is not in plain sight, and that photo was taken over my fence by the gentleman.
Who owns the property there, who is now complaining about your stuff, just like you're complaining about his.
And where is that trailer today, where, where has that trailer been?
I don't, I didn't look at. I didn't look at it.
It's in my driveway, it was only in that backyard when we were doing work, I had just went and brought a bunch of wood. From Home Depot, and I can show you the receipt for that too, to do stuff back there.
I'm not worried about that, this property, how long ago did we give you, did we sell you the property?
Two summers ago.
Two summers ago.
Right, and I asked you is it, what was my deadline, you said there was no deadline, as long as I was showing improvements.
Okay.
Is there a deadline now?
No, we don't have a deadline, we're just, we want you to continue to clean up the property, but before that, before we got you the property.
Well, and that's what I can do.
It was complaints about getting the house knocked down, then it's new lease on life, it's every, every single time something, there's a different issue all the time.
Right. Exactly, if I, if I did not complain about that house, it'd still be up, it was empty nine years with rats, I called a lady.
No, it was, it was already on the demo list before I got here, so that's not true.
Just because it was on the demo list, it means it was gonna happen, Rudzik and Purcelli are the ones that pushed for that to get torn down. So you say don't complain about it, I think nine years of a house falling apart beside my house where the grass was overgrown, I had the rightest task there to complain about it.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying that there's always something that you, that, that has to be complained about, but I have, now I have residents who are complaining about this. Just like you were complaining about this problem, is this, this truck is parked on grass.
What complaint do you, what do you want me to do about that? There are bricks lined up as a parking spot back there, that silver truck, or the gray truck, it is not on grass.
That silver truck is on. Have you gotten cited for anything from there?
Nothing, no, we sent a letter, because now we have complaints coming from this. Nothing.
But I will say, I, I wanna say this, back before Bill was here, we've had complaints about people's backyards, and we've always been told that there's nothing you can do about it, because it's a backyard, and I know I can tell that.
That's what it sounds like to me, that's how I'm reading it. But if your neighbor complains, if your neighbor complains.
You can't see none of it from the street sidewalk, you couldn't see it from the alley, he stood on the back of the truck with his hands up in the air, that's how he took that picture.
Definitely. If your neighbor complains, if your neighbor grants access, if you have a car parked back there that isn't registered.
Which we had at, with, with Mr. Cole's house.
And we had another one with, uh, Mr. Sidlacko, I believe, at one point.
Right.
If your neighbor grants them access, and they can see in your backyard that that car isn't registered, it's citable. Whether it's in the back or.
Not just a car.
Is that?
Just in general.
Is that trailer still parked on that property?
Back there, plates are valid.
That trailer, to send out pictures, it's still parked on.
Is there, is there, you'll have to ask?
On her driveway, she said.
I'm talking about the truck.
She said it's on her driveway now.
But that's a commercial vehi- commercial vehicle.
Yeah, that's a dual axle.
Dual axle. So that, that's violation right there.
My, that car trailer?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a commercial vehicle.
And our, how is that a commercial vehicle?
It's got a dual axles on it.
It says on there, that's kinda, I I didn't really know that, but it does say on there, if I'm reading it right, that's why I asked Jimmy to read it.
Just on the street alone, there, I counted five trailers and car trailers in the driveway on my way here today.
If it's a dual axle trailer, you can't park it at your house.
Right.
It's different.
Right, yeah, so, okay, I I just wanted to make sure that I was interpreting.
Oh, yeah, 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 I would agree with that.
Yeah, okay.
Car trailer's not allowed in drivers.
I'll move it, that's not a problem.
Yeah, that's why I'm reading it, I didn't.
I will move it. Nobody has ever said anything to me before, not a problem.
Okay, what else? Everybody got to say what they needed to say, um.
And we're gonna go about having to put more gravel down.
Correct, correct, and if we find that the gravel is compacted and there's nothing but mud, we'll have to do it again.
Okay.
If that, we'll be in compliance with the ordinance. Everybody okay with that?
I'm good with that.
Give this to Mr. Minchin, cuz he said he never received it. That's what you told me at the last meeting, you never received it.
Four eighty Maplewood?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was stamped September second.
I never got. Roy, that's Roy's house? No?
No.
No.
Roy's home.
Roy's four eighty four. Okay, and as far as Roy's house goes, I have the uh Don Downey from the county. Been trying to tear his garage down in his backyard now. Roy doesn't have.
That's on Elm. I'm speaking.
Okay, this is Maplewood, Maplewood.
That's Maplewood, yeah, that's the red house up there.
Ray Montero.
Huh? That house is vacant, correct? Is that house vacant?
No.
No, Ray.
You know Ray, yeah, it's his house.
It's the second house up from Elmwood.
Yeah. I imported him to cut his grass, Ray.
When?
The grass was cut on that, on that other property with the.
Yeah, I know, that, the backyard, the backyard, yeah, cuz two gentlemen cut that grass.
Yeah, I talked to the daughter, the the daughter, and I asked her to please cut it, and she had it cut down.
Right, and and Roddy, just so you know, there's gonna be a person moving in there to fix the house, and it's not gonna be a rental.
On Elmwood.
On Elmwood, six twenty four Elmwood, so please don't.
Yeah, that's fine.
What is the ordinance number for the, you know?
Here, I I'll give it to you.
Um also, why we're on Maplewood, there's a school bus parked on Maplewood.
Yeah, up in the driveway, the lady went to the.
Yeah.
She's a lot of parking.
No, no, it's.
Commercial vehicle.
Uh, it's actually under, I think it says it seats twelve or more, commercial, there's a few things that falls under.
School bus in in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't think it can be parked on the driveway. It it has more.
Well, I I'm pertaining to this. So I will go up there tomorrow and tell her it can't be parked there.
Thank you.
And then we have a couple houses on Creed Street, since we're talking about all the, all that, that we can see from the front.
One ninety and two twelve.
Yeah, so, so what are we doing there?
Uh, they have been notified.
I mean, on one ninety or one eighty?
One ninety, the county was in there.
But that front porch has not changed.
There's another ordinance, I mean. Yeah, there's a dumpster, she had all her furniture removed because CPA, Children's Protective Agency came in there. And they're working with the county on that.
So even the, and the mess on the front porch and everything, is that what?
That's gonna be, that's gonna be brought back into house. They had to defecate her house, cuz it was just ridden with, whatever, I don't know.
Well, and and that's the thing too, that's unfortunate, because we allow all that. Now, I've had, I've lived in a neighborhood before where roaches. Went ha- from house to house. So this is what you're gonna do on Creed Street too, is it's gonna go from house to house.
What's that?
If there's roaches and bugs or whatever, so I just mean, that house has been that way all summer long, with stuff outside.
Orcon was there and they supposedly disinfected her home.
So I mean, I, it's, that's a backyard that nobody sees. I'm talking about a front yard that we all have to look at every day when I walk my street.
I understand.
I called you last week and updated you on everything that was going on with CSB and with the county health department.
Yeah, so I, I don't know, I don't know what else you want me to do.
But I mean, it's not gotten any better. It's, that that.
We're working with the health department on, if we can get them charged under the hoarding ordinance that they have, that's what we're gonna go with. But CSB has a case open, the school's been notified.
Right.
It's an ongoing thing.
I know, but this has been weeks now. That dumpster's been there for how long, and they got all that stuff in the front, and that stuff has been in the front for how long?
A week.
I just called you last week. I just called you to update you.
What else we got?